I'd like to call to order the Clear Lake City Council Meeting and Redevelopment Successor Agency, hosted here at the Clear Lake City Hall Chambers at 14050 Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California, 95422. It is Thursday, May 11th, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
And Mayor Firdock?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you'd please remain standing, Tony Morales would like to come up and offer the invocation. Thank you for coming.
We'd just like to thank you, Lord, that we do have a city council father that can help our city in making choices and decisions regarding it and people, Lord. I pray tonight that things will go your way, Lord, not the way we think they should go, but the way you know they should go. And thank you for every city council member, Lord, for a mayor, Father, for all the people that come here and participate, Lord. Just let each other know in the morning, just have your way tonight, please, in Jesus' name.
I need some help. Would you, if you could? This is kind of your out. So you can hang on to that for a minute. This is Public Service Appreciation Week, and we used to call it Volunteer Week. And we really want to recognize the number of hours that people spend helping our city, helping the county, helping our state officials, all through volunteers. Thousands and thousands of hours annually are provided through volunteers to help do the work that we just otherwise wouldn't be able to get to. There's a lot of meetings that have to be attended. And obviously, we've got our VIP crew that work with the police department. We have a YANA program, working with the police department, making calls. I asked Councilwoman Overton to stand with me because she has a few volunteers that help her at the senior center. And all of these hours, countless hours, truly, give so much service to those in our communities that need it. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas our nation's progress has long been fueled through the efforts of selfless citizens who come together in service to their fellow Americans to change our country for the better. And whereas during Public Service Recognition Week, we honor those who dedicate themselves to ensuring America's promise that it rings true in every corner of our country, and we recommit to upholding the values they fight for every day. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Day in and day out, they provide a diverse service demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Clear Lake City Council does hereby designate May 7th through the 13th, 2017, as Public Service Appreciation Week in the City of Clear Lake. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city, dated this, the 11th day of May, 2017. So do we have any volunteers that are standing out, sitting out there?
Mayor, Lauren, are you a volunteer?
I was gonna say, I see people that are here that volunteer regularly. Mr. Van Diver, please step forward.
Yeah, come on.
Come on, get up here. You guys volunteer hundreds and hundreds of hours. Some of us can go and make it to the podium because we've been working so many hours. No, thousands and thousands of hours, truly, through churches, through our hospital. Truly, the community receives such a benefit of this, and I don't know that they truly recognize everything that you all do for us. And I just want to say thank you. And would you like to present that to one of our outstanding volunteers? I'd like to put you on the spot.
I'm gonna put it on the spot because I'm gonna give it to Mike because he does thousands and thousands of hours every year for our community.
He does.
So, I mean, seriously, thousands.
And just one high point. Our visitor's center will be opening soon because of Mike Van Diver. Anyone want to say something on volunteer appreciation?
No, Mike, you've got the words. You should say thank you.
Great for all of us.
Great for all of you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all very much for being here.
We can hang in at the visitor's center.
The next probably goes without saying. Always in May, always trying to make it down to Sacramento for the induction of the names on the Peace Officers Memorial site. Each and every year in May, more names are added to the Peace Officers Memorial. And this week is recognized, or this month is both recognized through the state and federal governments as Peace Officer Appreciation Week. So without having the acting chief here, I'm feeling a little bit lopsided. So would you please join me?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone you'd like to invite staying with you?
That's here.
Next here.
That's why I invited him.
Oh, yeah, Lauren.
Lauren, go get up here, Lauren. Excellent, thank you. This, I really am proud and humbled to be the person that gets to read this. This is from the California Legislature Assembly, a resolution for our Clear Lake Police Department. From Assembly Member Celia M. McGuire Curry, the fourth Assembly District Representative of our city, and she wanted to commend the Clear Lake Police Department. Whereas the protection of California communities is dependent upon local law enforcement agencies and the men and women who devote their time and energy to the duties of law enforcement service, as well as to those members of support staff who devote countless hours to performing the duties which keep the agencies running smoothly. Whereas in recognition of Law Enforcement Month, which will be celebrated during the month of May, 2017, Clear Lake Police Department, including Acting Chief Timothy Sully and the sworn officers, civilian personnel, and staff of the department, is deserving of special public commendations. And whereas, since its inception, Clear Lake Police Department has become widely known, respected for honesty, integrity, and dedicated service to the people of the City of Clear Lake, the rural city in Lake County, whose attendant problems for public safety are often presented by its rugged outdoors environment, which encompasses mountains and wooded areas, the largest natural lake in Lake County, largest natural lake in California, roadsteads, and numerous uneven, unpaved roadways. They even got them in there. Clear Lake Police Department, officers and staff are committed to serving the community in a manner that remains sensitive to the needs of the residents. It serves many of whom are living with the burden of unemployment and/or at the poverty level in order to provide the highest level of safety and protection to the public and to their property, encourage crime prevention, and deliver quality police service with honesty, integrity, compassion, and respect towards the rights of all people. And whereas, Clear Lake community values the members of the Clear Lake Police Department contributions toward the shared goal of peace for all within the city. And conversely, under the leadership of Acting Chief Timothy Sully, members of the Police Department continually endeavor to serve the community to the best of their abilities. Whereas throughout its history, Clear Lake Police Department has earned the public's trust, confidence, and support by being fair, just, and responsive to the public needs while also enforcing the law and protecting life and property. And it's only fitting at this time to officially recognize the tremendous sacrifices that all law enforcement officers, dispatchers, and community services officers make on behalf now and therefore be it resolved in the Assembly Member Cecilia M. McGuire Curry, that she points with eminent pride to the high standards maintained by the Clear Lake Police Department since its inception, applauds Acting Chief Timothy Sully, and the Department's sworn officers, civilian personnel, and staff for their commitment to uphold their duty to serve and defend the public, and extends the best wishes that the Department's excellence in public safety will continue in the years ahead. Members, Resolution Number 790, dated this 11th day of May, 2017, signed by the Honorable Assemblywoman. You might need more help. Any volunteers on the table? Okay, so, "From our Member of Congress, John Giermendi, a Congressional Commendation in Honor of the Clear Lake Police Department for Exemplary Service During Law Enforcement Month, dated May 1st, 2017. It is with great pleasure that I recognize the Clear Lake Police Department during Law Enforcement Month for its exemplary service. Clear Lake Police Department strives for perfection in its efforts to enhance public safety, delivering the highest level of police service with honesty, integrity, and compassion. Through its sacrifice and service, the Clear Lake Police Department has distinguished itself as a vital contributor to public safety and the truest asset of our community. On behalf of the men and women of California's third congressional district, please accept my sincere gratitude for the Clear Lake Police Department's selfless service and protection of our community, as well as my best wishes for its success in all future endeavors. Signed by John Giermendi, Member of Congress." I'd like to introduce Nick Bennett, who will read the next presentation.
This is a certificate of recognition presented to Timothy Sully, the Clear Lake Police Department Acting Chief of Police, in recognition and gratitude for your honorable dedication to our public, to public service, and your commitment to providing exceptional safety to citizens of Clear Lake. 2017 National Police Week, and signed by...
Martin McGuire.
Martin McGuire, California State Senator.
He's signature.
I'm applauding too loud. He gave me all these good heels.
Let me hold this.
Absolutely. You know, my name was mentioned in there a lot, but I can't take all the credit for that. You know, I really want to thank the men and women of the Clear Lake Police Department. They put countless hours out there patrolling the streets and doing the job that needs to be done. I want to thank the city council, and especially the people, because the public is who we work for, and without their public trust, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. And so I just want to say thank you. You know, a department can run without a chief, but a chief can't be a chief without a department. So, and I want to thank all the volunteers and everybody. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Back to work. Thank you for your patience, but I sure am proud of everybody who received awards tonight, and especially our Clear Lake Police Department during Police Officers Week. Okay, moving on to the adoption agenda. Do we have any changes, Mr. Folsom?
I have a presentation.
Yes, I'm removing presentation number one.
Yeah, I jumped ahead and I...
Just a little.
There was so much stuff up here, I couldn't hardly...
You were just excited.
I was very excited. Needed to get that stuff given out.
We'll be moving back to the next agenda.
Yeah. I got a call from Jenny Craven with Operation Tangle Mic, and they were not able to make it tonight. So I needed to postpone that to our next meeting. But you can still, thank you, you can still make donations to the Operation Tangle Mic Red Can, which is sitting right outside the council chambers here, or there's another one at our Lake County Fire Station on Olympic Drive. And all of those donations in kind will be given to our troops who are overseas representing our great country. All right, moving on to public comment. Mr. Jones, do we have any announcements from closed session?
The announcement is that there was no action taken in closed session. Thank you.
That's probably why I forgot. Moving on to public comment. Public comment, is it?
Yeah, number four.
Do something.
I apologize. Yeah, we need to do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And to all those out there with the youth center, I apologize. We have a presentation to the council by our Clear Lake Youth Center. Would that representative like to please come forward?
Sure.
Thank you very much for all of you being here.
Oh, absolutely. Glad to be here. So what I would like to start out with, all right, so, yeah, Mike, that's a good show. All right, so I'd like to do is introduce everyone that's here, because all of you may not be aware who actually is on the board for the Lake County Youth Services. Myself, Kent Vanmore, I'm on the board, and then we have...
Lauren Freeman.
Who is our Vice President.
Lynn Freeman.
Carl Corrigan.
And then our President for Lake County Youth Services is Brock Falkenburg, who was unable to attend this evening, as well as Samantha Sandhoff, who is our Secretary, and Jack Smolley, who's a general member. I'd like to also announce that our meeting will be Monday at the Lake County Youth Services at 6:00 PM, and we would invite all of you who would like to attend, please do so. We have a lot of exciting things that are coming up and some accomplishments. During the last eight weeks, we've managed to go through quite the array of different agenda items that we have. Anyway, so some of those items that have happened at the youth center in the last two months include cleanups, dump runs, fire extinguishers have been serviced and up to the standards they're supposed to be at, max occupancy signs have been posted, scheduled community kitchen stove hood ansel systems have been moving forward. We put in deadlines for facility projects, including roof estimates, windows, weed abatement, paint and siding, grounds, and financial estimates. The first major goal that we have at the youth center right now is reversing the suspension of the nonprofit status. It has not been a nonprofit, well, it has been suspended nonprofit for two years now. The vision that we have for the youth center includes community collaboration that increases the likelihood of kids and the youth having a safe place to be. We'd like to have a public calendar and just basically be there for the youth. That's what I've always done in this county the last 10 years, just probably not a nonprofit that I haven't been associated with. We generally all have a love and desire to work with the youth, and we want to have a place to do so. Some of the future projects that we have coming in, we, Lauren and myself, we do Student Reach, which is live coaching in the Conaxa Unified School District. Right about now, we have about 250 kids that are enrolled in that program. And so part of that program includes a humanitarian aspect, where they actually bring in recruits and they revamp buildings. And our goal is to revamp the youth center starting in June. The programs that we have in the youth center right now are limited. They include Boyson and Zumba. The Junior Giants Program is not available on the Clear Lake side, but is available in Kelseyville at the Sheriff's Activity League. And anything else that I wanted to?
One of our visions is to restore the youth center so that it can be actually for our youth. It's been non-operational essentially for a while, and my dream and my passion is for our youth here in this community and to become fully involved in that process and have a facility that will facilitate our youth having a safe place to go, that will be supervised, that will be safe, clean, and allow our youth to have a facility that they can have pride of ownership, that they can have wholesome activities that they can do, and hopefully alleviate some of the constraints that we have in our community with maybe vandalism, graffiti, painting is sometimes, some of those other issues. One of my passions has been for our youth, and my hope is to become more involved with that. I've obviously retired from law enforcement for the last 18 years, and this is my new venture, is to volunteer with Student Reach and then also become heavily involved with the youth center. And I thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us? We would be more than happy to answer questions or have a dialogue if that's so appropriate.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I love the goals. I'm concerned about the lack of nonprofit for the last two years, however, is it just the new enthusiasm of the new board that believes that these goals are attainable? Because I know that we've struggled to get the community buy-in in order to make those goals become a reality, because in the past I've heard similar goals, and it's unfortunate that the community has not really bought into it, and wondering what's going to be the change to get the community to buy in. I love that you guys are involved, because I know you will, you're buying into it, but how do we get the community to?
In light of this, and seeing some interest, I think maybe what we should do is invite you back, we can actually get it on the agenda so that we have some discussion. Would you be okay with that, Vice Mayor? Do you have consensus to do that?
As a short answer, the last three years, my job has been to provide comprehensive support services in Lake County. And so my collaboration with the many different organizations and the people that are involved in those organizations has been my primary focus. I don't know if you're familiar with the Hubble Early Project, but I feel as though it was a pretty great job, and I don't think there's one agency that didn't partake in that project.
Well, thank you.
This is actually what we do. I've worked in extreme impact ministries for eight years with Chris Matzegel, and worked with Lauren. Lauren did the landing, which is in aid for high school kids. I worked with them closely in that. When Lauren told me he was prepared to give up his job to efficient gain to meet the needs of the youth in this community, how can I not follow him into that? The building, it's a building. Building's no big deal. We can fix the building. What we need to do is have a credible center where people will actually donate money, get behind it, and there's some major changes we've got to do to get that done, and that's our biggest goal, in my estimation. It's not the walls, not the roof. It's community input, and we're gonna earn that.
I'm so grateful for you all coming down, and it's great to see you again. Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Always good to see you. Nice to meet you. But if we could, I'd like to get that agenda as we can do a little more work and have some more dialogue during the presentation. We can't really ask a lot of questions. You know, there might be some questions the public wants to ask to see what's going on with our youth center, and I think that would be a better way to do it.
Yeah, and every meeting will be the third Monday of the month at 6:00, and those will be publicized for that general agenda for anybody.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thanks for being here. If I'm in the right place, I believe we're at public comment. Public comment is a time for anyone wishing to address the council. If you haven't submitted a card, that's okay. We welcome you to come up. We've got three minutes on the clock. You're welcome to talk about any item that you'd like to talk about that is not on tonight's agenda. And the clerk will time you. Please come up and introduce yourself. Don't everybody fight your way to the front. All right, seeing no one coming up for public comment, I'm gonna close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Folsom, do we have any changes or modifications to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
With that, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to pull item number five, please.
Okay, item number five, warrant register.
And item number seven.
And consideration of the MOUs for, with St. Helena Hospital, Clear Lake, regarding 340B program. Any other changes? Would any member of the public like to hear or discuss an item that's on our consent agenda? If you would, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that and bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve items number six, eight, and nine on the consent agenda.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So let's move on to number five, warrant register. Mr. Folsom?
It's the question about item number five.
So it wasn't a question. I pulled this so that I can speak publicly about what I was happy to see here on the register, and I'm looking for it right now. I'm hoping to find it real soon. Yes, it was on page, looks like page three of the warrant. Item number three shows that the City of Clear Lake gave $500 to the Lakeshore Lions for the fireworks. That is part of our contract that we have, and I'm really happy to see it as early as this. I know that in the past it has been difficult to get them that 500, and seeing it this early is a great start to help them raise the funds that they need for the fireworks. And I want to make everybody aware that you can donate as well to help out with the fireworks. I'm sure if you go to Bob's Vacuums or if you go to Tatanka's, you can go ahead and drop off your donations there to help out so that every year we have a wonderful Fourth of July parade, and that's concluded with a wonderful fireworks display. And that typically comes from the community donating for that. And so I just wanted to pull that item to make sure that people were aware that they can participate and help us have a wonderful Fourth of July. And thank you to the city for the donation.
So let's take action on item five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve item number five on the consent agenda.
Second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Moving on to item seven, which is Memorandum of Understanding with St. Helena Hospital, Clear Lake, regarding 340B program.
We were approached by St. Helena Hospital, Clear Lake, to approve a Memorandum of Understanding with them to, with regard to their participation in the 340B drug pricing program. They need this in order to get reimbursed under their, under the program. I think that was my tour.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
And so when I was looking through this MOU, since we are signing on to help out our hospital to obtain, I believe it's $1.2 million, I was hoping that we can get an annual report to show how they received that funding and what that funding was used to help with the health of our community.
Is there a prescription drug program?
We can ask them to come and give that presentation.
Any other comments? Anyone from the public wanting to discuss item seven regarding this funding or supportive funding? Seeing none, I'll close that and bring it back for action.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Approve the MOU and authorize the city manager to execute the MOU.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? There being none. There being none. So moving on to open our public hearing, I would like to move on to item 10, which is continuation of our public hearing to confirm assessments in a total of $5,000 for administrative penalties for failure to obey public nuisance in according to the Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, and 10-5.6. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. The proprietors and staff are requesting that we open the public hearing and continue it to the next city council meeting on May 25th.
Thank you. Any comments on this item? Seeing none? Any comments from the public on item 10? Very well, I'll bring it back and close public comment. Mr. Vice Mayor?
We're going to leave the public comment, uh, public hearing open and leave it open until May 25th.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Out of curiosity, since it's not reported, I'm not sure if you're aware specifically, has there been at least some kind of progress on those properties?
I don't know specifically.
Any other comments? Motion?
Actually, no. We'll just leave the public hearing open.
Thank you. Then moving on to business, item number 11, consideration of sponsorship for the Art Bureau by the Children's Museum of Art and Sciences, CMOS, and the Art House Gallery Wildlife of Clear Lake Youth Public Arts Project.
At our last meeting, you had received a presentation from CMOS regarding their mural project. You had asked with consensus to bring it back to council for consideration, so this is your time to consider how you would like to proceed on this.
Thank you. One of the things we would want, we were asked to do if you weren't present at the meeting, is they were looking at taking works of art done by our children in the community on four-by-four poster boards, much like if you're familiar with the quilt hanging projects where you may see art that looks like quilts on different large buildings. Kind of breaks up that hard surface and gives a little more color. The presentation was made that we would have some of the local kids doing scenic art renderings of local bird life, that type of thing. And I feel that we should support that if we can financially, but definitely we have some hard surfaces that might be beautified by being able to hang and display some of the art that these kids produce. So that's why we brought it back. Any discussion in council at this point? Any member of the public would like to speak on behalf of this project and our agenda item? Please step forward. It's good stuff, man, kids painting stuff, not doing graffiti. Anyway, okay, not seeing any comment. Coming forward, I'll bring it back for council for action. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make sure everybody knows that the paintings that the youth will be painting will be on display on May 20th at the Art House Gallery, which is, I'm not sure what the plaza is called, but right next to St. Helena Clear Lake's Family Clinic and Livewell. And so that's where we'll be able to choose which art piece we would like to use. I'm in favor of beautifying our city with artwork. I know that we're limited on funds. We don't have any separate line item in our budget for this, so I'm looking at maybe offering a two-way street on how to get this done, which is maybe opening up an account for us as council members to donate towards the cause, to help out with the cost to the city, or maybe for others in the public to want to help out as well to donate towards this cause.
I would want to take staff time. I think we can just make donations.
Directly to them.
Directly, that would be easy. Mr. Harris?
Yeah, very supportive of a program like this, obviously anything that's encouraging our youth to participate in our community and especially such a, in such a direct way like that. And then obviously, if we can utilize our facilities here to provide an area for them to display their art, I would be very supportive of that.
Wonderful. Councilman Norberton?
Yeah, another thing is, is it might be something that we can put down at the community building too, because there are some events coming up. Maybe it would be nice to showcase some of them maybe down the hallway, just right there. It's not to really take that. Most people don't decorate the hallway, so maybe we can use that hallway to do, or the front there to do some art displays. I think that would be a good place for it, is the community building.
Good idea. I think it always, all that supports our kids. Any other comments?
Thank you all. Great ideas.
Great ideas. Do we have action? Consistency, direction, know what we like.
We'd like to do it wherever we can.
Well, what I hear is that you're open to taking donations for it.
Well, we're recommending and we're encouraging members of the public to offer donations for this project, and we can offer or provide that information to them if they need specifics. We have the application format here within our packet, so I know it's here at City Hall. I would also like to encourage your offer up. We've got some blank space on some walls here at City Hall and at the police department where art could be hung outside and displayed, at least maybe one or two pieces. Council?
Depends on how many that they have, I think, is what we need to come find out what they have to go where, what they would like us to do, you know? I think we're all in consensus that we want to put them in a public place where they could be due. So I think it's going to really determine on how many pieces we actually, they actually produce. Some of these might produce a few, you know, and they might produce a lot, so it just kind of depends on how much is produced where we put it. So I think we encourage people to donate to them, and they can donate directly to them. We can give them the information at the City Hall, you know, maybe post something like this here so that people can just see it. And then maybe when it's completed, we can see what kind of pieces they have and where to place them at. So I think that's kind of hard to place when we don't know what it is that we're going to be placing.
Again, it's a four-by-four board. They can be taken up and taken down because they're going to be on permanent mountings that would be on the wall, as I recall the presentation that was made.
We used to, excuse me, we used to display the arts in the hall. I mean, that's where we would display that.
These would be outside.
They can be inside as well if you wanted to.
Yeah, we were careful putting them outside. If you put them outside, it better be at the first apartment.
I was just going to mention that I've seen CMOS do their science camp, I've seen CMOS do their Lego work after school. They seem to attract a large youth audience, so I don't think, I'm not concerned about the quantity of art pieces. I think we're going to see quite a lot of good stuff, so I'm looking forward to it.
So locations on the buildings that we own, the city has oversight on, where we might be able to help it, this will fit down. Could be on my direction. Thank you. Yes, we can open up public comment if you would like to make comments. You have a question?
I'm sorry, Cheryl, I'm going to voice for this stream. I don't think this is on. I'll just talk louder.
Okay.
I don't know about this. I'm not really sure what you're talking about, other than it's similar to the quilting thing. Have, are the donations to provide materials for the artwork or aid for the artwork, okay, for materials?
For the materials.
Have we asked the other businesses in town to maybe see if they would like to also hang the art? I could see that offering a bigger community outreach for the play and a feeling of value to our youth and support of our youth.
And I believe that was something that was done both through the Art House Gallery and through the Children's Museum of Art and Science. They're just asking us for our support and that we might allow them to hang art on city-owned buildings.
Okay, I'd like to, I'm, that's fair.
That's okay, but it seems like a really good program for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else since I've reopened public comment? Very well, I'll close it again and bring it back. So, got our recommendation on that. And with that, we will open item 12, consideration of appointments to ad hoc committee and discuss the homeless issues and report recommendations to the council. Give a lot of thought to this. Spoke with Vice Mayor this morning. We have several different projects and go in different directions, some of which I've been involved with. I know Councilman Norberton just pictured off yesterday with you, Mr. Folsom, to go see a tiny homes project that Uba County has done. So I think that we need more work on this. Unfortunately, with my schedule, I'm not able to really do that, so I'd like to ask and offer up. Councilman Norberton, would you be interested in sitting on that ad hoc? I thought you might. And Vice Mayor, since this was your item, would you please represent as the other member?
Yes.
I did not have a chance. Mr. Webb on our claiming commission was not available. I think he and maybe Mr. Kramer would be good.
Well, I was thinking maybe that we'd let them do that, but I think that they have some interest as well, so if you could. Yeah, if you want to direct the planning commission to appoint two members.
Yes, I think that's important that they also, because we could be looking at some planning issues as part of that. So, any other comments? Mr. Vice Mayor?
When I looked at this report, I noticed one thing automatically that jumped out, and that was the, what I believe is the lack of an at-large public member. And I'd like to have at least one, possibly two, public members involved. And I guess at that point, we'd have to figure out who we would choose.
That's pretty consistent with all the ad hocs we've put together.
Exactly.
So if you would, if you have any suggestions? I would ask that we each submit at least one name, get them to Mr. Folsom. Is that adequate? And move forward. Is everybody good with that?
I think the only motion we want would be the appointment of two members here in the creation of this meeting, but I think with regard to the other, adding other members, that doesn't need to be done by the council at this point.
Just recommendations, how, Mr. Folsom?
Direction for staff.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Any other comments on this? So, we would like to create that ad hoc and move forward.
I think a motion to create the ad hoc and the appointment of the two council members. And direct the planning mission.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you want.
Sure.
I'm trying to make that motion.
I didn't see all that involved work, but go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we create an ad hoc homeless, ad hoc homeless committee and the appointment of said councillor, Vice Mayor Bruno Sabatier, and Joyce Overton, myself, and directions to the city manager to add the planning commissioners. Is that all right? Is that all, everything?
To direct the planning commission to appoint?
To direct the planning commissioners to appoint two positions to the ad hoc committee. Correct? Is that everything?
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can see that we are way far.
That's amazing. You can do public comment after.
We can't. Anybody from the public want to comment on this? I saw this as a recommended action still.
It is.
Anyone from the public, any comment? Way to be consistent, you guys. Bring it back. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Mr. Folsom, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. As you mentioned yesterday, councilmember Overton and I and Joyce Adams from Cornerstone Village went out and visited Marysville to see the, what they call 14 Forward, which is a very similar concept to the tiny home village that's been discussed around here. It was a very interesting setup there, and we'll probably be talking about that a lot more at our ad hoc committee. Also yesterday, I visited with an engineer who was helping us to come up with some design ideas for our relocated public works courtyard and for the animal control. So that project is moving forward. Let's see, last week, we had our flag raising at Austin Park. Several members of the council attended that. We had our, not a week, but there was an innovation summit last week in Merrymouth that I attended, and several members of the council attended that as well. And I think I'll just close with saying we did get this photo donation from Frederick Veo, if I'm pronouncing that right, who took pictures from our Clear Lake cleanup bay, so we'll be displaying that.
He's a member of our CC for C group, volunteer.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Mr. Overton?
Okay, the last you guys know, I was on vacation for a few weeks, if that's what we call that. Since I got back, on May 1st, we had a youth center board meeting. I was also at the raising of the flag. Great kids, they were awesome. I always love to see those kids get in there. Also had a special council meeting. Went to the innovation summit over at Merrymouth. Went to Marysville, so we'll get into that. That was a very good project. I think that there's some things that we could do. I like looking at something and asking them what they would change, so that was kind of nice. Tomorrow, I'm going to be going to the project restoration meeting. I did miss a healthy Clear Lake meeting, leadership meeting today, but our health roadmap is completed, and they would like to do a presentation. I don't know if you got my email on that, but I emailed you over on that. Next week, LACCO will be here at City Hall at 9:30 in the morning. On the 18th, I'll be going to the Healthy Clear Lake Collaborative, and on the 19th, I'll be going to the League of Cities Division meeting in Fort Wright. Looking forward to that, getting back involved, and that's kind of nice. And I want to wish all our mothers out there in our audience and in our TV land, Happy Mother's Day, and hope you guys all enjoy.
Mr. Harris?
I have very little to report. It's just the last meeting. We did have a special council meeting. Other than that, not a lot going on in the last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
I attended an ADA meeting last week, early this week, and the funds have been released to Lake County and distributed, and we should be towing vehicles shortly, abandoned vehicles, and...
We are currently tagging cars, and next week, we'll start towing.
Yes, so, and depending upon the number of tolls we make and the report that is submitted to the state, then we will be getting quarterly reimbursement from the state, so there will not be another delay as we've had in the past, so this will be an ongoing project. Yesterday, we had a Lake County Area Planning Commission meeting down in Middletown. Lake County Transit needs to move their so-called hub from next to Ray's because the property's sold there, and they don't know what's going to happen with that, and it's not a good location for the hub up there anyway. They decided yesterday, after a long process, to build a very, very nice hub on a damn road extension right next to Sears across the, near Uba College, near where Mental Health is and into there.
Woodland College.
Woodland College. It's time to say. And so that construction should start probably later on this year, we hope. Plan, well, there still has to be DIR and everything else, so maybe not into next year. Lieutenant's selling attendant, and there was some security concerns that are being addressed, and it'll be a nice addition. And that's about it, I think, you know?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Salati?
I also do not have much to report. I was gone for work to a seminar, and I seem to have missed all the fun of the flag raising, the special meeting, and the homeless conference over in Lucerne, so I'm afraid that I missed all the entertaining stuff. But I am looking forward to LAFCO, and I'm looking forward to starting this new ad hoc committee. I'm really happy, and thank you very much to the council for approving creating the committee. I think we've been long waiting to have some answers or some solutions to trying to provide something for our homeless to transition back into everyday living.
Sir. Well, I've had some fun. Had a very exciting and exhilarating meeting when we were talking about universal garbage pickup. Tell you, you don't really want to miss one of those. A lot of good times, good people. Also attended the flag raising. Awesome to see our kids out there. But a special thanks to the Park Study Club. Park Study Club is a group in our Clearlake Park, or it used to be considered Clearlake Park before we incorporated. Ladies particularly, ladies and gentlemen, they get together and they raise money, and they raise money for a couple of different things, scholarships, but one of the biggest things I see is that flag that flies so proudly over Austin Park through the summer months. And I'm hopeful, if weather will be a little respective, it might make it to Veterans Day. I was trying to hope that we can lower it on November 11th on Veterans Day, because it's just so beautiful. So that was really nice, and getting to listen to the national anthem. I went also to the Lake County Innovation Summit. Folks, there's some really good work being done by some really good people in our community, and I really want to give hats off to Administ Health Clearlake that came up with $300,000 in a pilot project to look at our super utilizers, those folks that we're commonly dealing with, both at law enforcement levels, party fire and EMS level, and of course, at the emergency room or emergency department, looking for better ways to help them so they don't impact it, which is very expensive, quite frankly. So if we can find better, smarter ways to spend our money and to help these folks, perhaps get out of the rut that they're in, that's what the plan is. And I really want to commend all the time that our staff has given, as well as the staff of St. Helena Clearlake, to, to help accommodate what will likely be one to five people initially as startup, but again, trying to help them transition from the troubles they're having with either homelessness, drugs and alcohol addictions, or mental health issues, working with behavioral health. I also want to thank the county representatives. They are a huge component, North Coast Opportunities, and our continuing care group. Everybody's coming together and it's collaborative to make something really positive happen, and it's exciting to be a part of. Also went with Councilmember Bennett to the Lake ABC and Lake Transit. We're really watching what's happening in Sacramento. As you might have heard, the governor passed a pretty spendy tax initiative for registration and fuel tax, but Clearlake, like a lot of other cities, is looking to receive some of that. One of our incentives, because we did our self-help tax this past November, is that kind of puts us at the forefront for additional funding, so that's very exciting too, if it goes through. And last, I'll also be going to Fort Brink for League of Cities, for Redwood Chapter of League of Cities. A lot of good things happening there. And I'll also be headed in June to Sacramento for the Public Safety Committee through the state. So we'd like to thank our representative of state. There's a wonderful presentation tonight to our police department. They're doing a lot of good work, and we are so appreciative of all the work that they do, as well as our volunteers. And at our next meeting on the 25th, I hope you guys can come back, because we're going to recognize Operation Tangle Mike and the good work that they do every third Thursday, packing up care packages for all of our kids that are overseas, serving in our military. And with that, I'll conclude it. Thank you all for your time and your being here. We're adjourned.